Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order this work study for school district, independent school district 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Bellloy?
Here.
Chapman?
Here.
Ellison?
Here.
Fahey here.
Mullen?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
And Wilson?
Here.
Good evening, everyone. So first is, first discussion item on the agenda is the elementary literacy update. Ms. Paul?
All right, Chairman, Dr. Kaczmarek, members of the board. Excited to be here tonight to have an opportunity to provide an update to you regarding the work that we've been doing in our elementary literacy work. Got a large group here because we've got our literacy coaches here and then the principals because they obviously are the key instructional here in each building. They've got a couple of representatives from the principals to kind of be part of the conversation. As we go through, if you have questions, we'd like to take those as we go. And everybody up here has a role in kind of sharing the information, so please feel free to let us know, chair, if there's a question you'd like us to address throughout, so you don't have to wait till the end. All right.
I want to start, if you don't mind. I have a question.
All right.
I want to first just thank all of you guys, as I've been out talking to parents. They love the work that every one of you are doing, so thank you all very much. Greatly appreciate that. And do you guys know the Bear Fight song?
Well, you know, I think the best way for us to start this is to say, "Go Bears!"
Love that.
All right. Well, you know, to begin with a quote from the Center for Public Education, "Reading is the gateway for acquiring knowledge, learning to read, and you can read to do just about anything." So, reading is just really a compelling why. Reading really is about literacy in all of the ways that we are developing literacy in our students each and every day, so that they can accomplish all that they want through high school and into their post-secondary ventures. So with us tonight, we are just very fortunate, like I said, to have such a great team here that's really all about supporting quality instruction and helping each and every teacher be the best teacher they can be and helping us to get to the student outcomes that we're after. And so, we're going to start over here with Lori. I'm going to just do some introductions real quick. How about when it's your turn, just make sure you introduce yourself and your role so that people can make sure to acknowledge everybody that's here.
Thank you. My name is Laurie Schubiler, and I'm a literacy coach at Badness and District White. So, thank you for having us here tonight. So, literacy is the cornerstone of all learning and encompasses communication through understanding language in both written and spoken form. And you can see how literacy includes the reading, writing, listening, and speaking that we do each and every day, and how complex that all that learning is, and how there's so much to it that we do to support our kids. And we just feel that as literacy coaches, how privileged we are to work with our teachers and students in White Bear Lake, and being able to support the work that they're doing. We see such dedicated teachers that are eager to continue their learning, to continue to do what they can for their students. And it's just really a privilege, and we see such a culture of learning happening here in White Bear for that. We're here to support our teachers, and we do that through a variety of things that we're all going to talk about. But we're really here to develop some highly proficient reading and writing, readers and writers, that are prepared for the 21st century. We do that by developing both their written and spoken language, which really supports their communication and being able to express themselves. And not express themselves only in literacy, but to express themselves across the content areas where they are able to speak again and write and read in all those areas. There's some essential elements that we talk about, and that's the phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, comprehension, and writing and conversation as well. We do all those things through our comprehensive literacy framework that we're going to talk about in a little bit. And that allows us to do both whole group and small group instruction. Small groups where we can honor the strengths that the kids bring to us and also match their learning in small groups, what their next steps might be. We do that by including a lot of ongoing assessments, so that we can differentiate and know where each student is. And through a variety of genres, through new technologies, and incorporate those again across all of our content areas. And all of this in hopes of creating a lifelong learner, someone that is excited about learning, who loves to share their learning, who is ready for post-secondary education, who is ready for meaningful employment, and a productive and rewarding life. So, you can see there's a lot to this journey.
Oh, it's me. As you look through the timeline on our literacy journey, it's been kind of exciting as you go back to 2012, and this gem of a book was created, which is the framework book that Anne's going to go into more, obviously based on the Minnesota language art standards at that time. But then what was really exciting was another kickoff in 2015, which was the return on investment study that took place. And there was really a couple of things that came out of that study. One was just trying to find which of the components of this framework were most effective in the primary level as well as in the intermediate level. And then another two things that were discovered was that it's really important to have assessment-driven instruction in place, as well as the implementation of learning targets. So, if you're a classroom teacher, you reflect back on a few years ago, there was an emphasis on those learning targets, to be a part of that instructional environment, which is kind of exciting. Then we move into 2016, and that's when we really kicked into a more personalized experience for the classroom teacher, and that's the implementation of the cultures. And we did it in two areas. One was the literacy area, and the other was in the technology. And that was really exciting, but is also brand-new for us as a district. And to take the professional development that normally was taught to the group as a whole, but then now bring it to the individual teacher in their classroom environment, was really an exciting stretch for us in the district. And we thank you for your support on that.
Excuse me one second, Dan. Two things. First, can you introduce yourself for the record, because we're recording this?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I was so excited to see my slide up there.
It's all good.
Dan Schmidt, the principal at Lincoln Elementary.
Perfect. And then Solison has a question.
And you might be getting to this later, but I was just curious, is the number of literacy coaches per site?
Right. So, we have one literacy coach per two sites, as of right now. And then there's been some juggling going on in there, but it's pretty much that ratio.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. And so, as we move into still 2016, another area that was kind of exciting is the collaborative inquiry team concept that was introduced, CIT, as you hear it. And each of our buildings have adopted that wholeheartedly. Some schools had a little bit of dance start on it while others were catching up. But pretty much we're meeting on a weekly basis overall, and then we're taking advantage of the professional development time that's in place through the calendar that's been adopted. And so, half days or many of the PD days are given just to really focus on that CIT time. Now, what is CIT time? It's in a very simplistic way, is looking at the Minnesota standards in certain subject areas, literacy. And then you really dive deep into your professional strategies of instruction that you're putting into the classroom. You look at the data that's available, and really reflect deeply into that data, and then decide, okay, what is it that we need to do so that we make sure the students can master those standards? But if they're struggling, what else can we do to help those students who are struggling? And the other part is, if they've already mastered it, what do we do to take them even further than that? So CIT sounds simple on the forefront, but it's really complex, and it allows teachers really to dive deep into their instruction and to build on that professional growth that they're so excited about. And then, when we look at 2019, where are we heading? Obviously, we anticipate the review and the revisions of the language art standards that are coming up from Minnesota, and we'll take advantage of that and look at that and how it affects us. We also are going to continue to refine on how we balance the number of assessments that we have in place for the teachers, to look at the data and see which assessments are most effective. And so, right now, the common interim assessments are in place, full-fledged, right now. And it's really been interesting and exciting to see how you can look at fine-tuning some of the standards that those common interim assessments are addressing for the teachers, and then taking that and moving it into the practice, and how do we change our practice?
Common interim?
Yes, common interim assessment.
What does that mean?
So, let's give it periodically throughout the year. So, once a quarter, you base it on certain standards that you hope that that grade level student would master at that point. And the teachers then will take that evidence, and then reflect on it, and either build on students that are still needing to master those, but then also building on the next set of standards that they need to accomplish for the next quarter. All right? It's more than just periodic throughout the year versus one time a year.
That's one situation.
Yeah. Oh, thanks. The other thing that's real exciting is that with the comprehensive strategic plan that's in place, now we get to see how this all ties in with the district's strategic plan overall. And I think that's in the 2018 year, and now the building levels, right now, have also implemented their own strategic planning process. We want to thank you for that support and trust in our building sites to do our own strategic planning. So, with all these components in place, we're hoping that we can stay the course with what we have in place, because we're seeing progress now being made with the performance of the kids in the area of literacy. And we also want to make sure that we get a deeper focus for the students, so that they can accomplish their own goals, and also to have an exciting experience in the area of literacy. Thank you.
So, back when we first brought to you this idea of having coaches, again, that year we added both technology, digital learning specialists or other innovation coaches, and our literacy coaches. We really tried to really look at the research, what was going to make the coaching most effective. And so, really, three big ideas. Somebody that really understood coaching and the ability to actually help somebody dig into their practice and actually help them with expertise, so that they could improve upon their instruction to get to the outcomes we're after, was really grounded in research. Second of all, was that opportunity for the embedded way to receive that coaching, which we saw that connection between our collaborative inquiry team model and the coaching role. And then, the third one is looking at the importance of the frequency of those touchpoints, so that somebody could actually shift in their practice. And so, these three kind of big ideas under the research base were something that we really moved forward with the coaching model.
I'm Amber Flonie. I'm a literacy coach at Will Mikeers. I'm talking a little bit about reading well by third grade. I think obviously that stays on the mind of us as literacy coaches and teachers and principals, just really working to ensure that our students are proficient by third grade. We recognize the importance of that, and that impact that that has on our students, both positively and negatively, for those that are reading proficiently. Children who cannot read are unable people for their peers, not only in literacy, but also really start to fall behind in other subject areas, as literacy just is kind of that foundation across all of them. Research has shown those who are not proficient by third grade are four times more likely not to graduate. Our students that are significantly behind, who don't even have those basic skills, are six times more likely. So, it's really something that we place a lot of emphasis on, and that is the working hard to ensure our students are reading proficient.
So, question.
Dan just had a question about the placement of the dash line for grade three there. Clearly, it's in the center of your illustration.
I'll be explaining that.
All right.
Thank you. All right. So, I'm Deb Tebow. I'm a literacy coach, and I work with Hugo, Jason, and Onika with Terry. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the myth of reading to learn and learning to read, or learning to read and reading to learn. That dash line actually is really important. So, what, if you've ever heard of learning to read and reading to learn, there's always been this kind of historical thought that kids in grades K through three are, are, sorry, should I stop?
Just one second. I don't want to be a distraction to you. I don't want to not click and forward anymore.
It works better.
It likes to be on.
So, you have the size of your packet, so I don't want to be a distraction doing this while she's talking, so.
I can actually go, because the slide stays the same. So, you might have heard of, have you heard of learning to read and reading to learn? I know when I was in college, actually, that's what I kind of subscribed to that belief. And that is the thought that in grades K through three, the students really, in literacy, are there to learn how to read. And then there's this magical shift where you see that dotted line, that ta-da, now all of a sudden, we get to start reading to learn. However, we now know that that's not the case, and that children are learning to read and reading to learn together all the time. There is no separation at any time. So, today, in our classrooms here in White Bear, in grades K through three, children still are definitely learning how to read, but they are learning for information all the time. They're right from kindergarten, they're learning strategies, building on comprehension, just really wonderful things to help them build that. And then in our fourth and fifth grades, fourth and fifth grades, they are still focusing on comprehension, and recalling, and analyzing information, but there are still students that are going to need help, continual help, learning how to read. So, it goes into more developed phonics instruction, or maybe sounding out bigger words, or now the vocabulary is a little bit more difficult. So, they still need that ongoing support with their word instruction. So, basically, the wonderful thing about this is that this instructional balance kind of supports all of us in adequately preparing students for the demands of college, the workplace, and beyond. But the truth is, something to remember, is that all of us here, everybody in this room, is still learning to read, and hopefully, reading to learn.
Do you need the next slide?
Before, Carla tells you a little bit more about the framework, Anne Mall, what's teaching and learning. And so, I work with curriculum review, professional development, and I get to work closely with the literacy coaches. Just to note, as we develop and do curriculum reviews, you've probably seen frameworks before, it's really important for you to note that we develop frameworks in this district to help us develop and organize the parameters, and the policies, and the practices, so we really clearly identify. And these are created with curriculum leaders, principals, literacy coaches, the actual framework is brought to the board, but it really guides our work, and it really reflects evidence and practices that we know really can impact learning, and helping our teachers learn about that learning. So, the frameworks are a really important piece of this.
Yes, so I'm Carla Triggs. I am the literacy coach at Lincoln and at Matoska. So, as you can see, this is our new comprehensive literacy framework. We worked on this as a group a few years ago, and it's very foundational in many of the things that we do. It's really grounded us in the PD that we do as a district, at a district level, so that we have a very common message in these different areas and these different components. But it has also really grounded us as, at a building level, we're really able to differentiate what our buildings need, and we're trying to get to all of those components as well. That's taken some time, but will continue to take time. And speaking of time, we also use this with individual teachers. Everyone has a copy of this, the teachers are familiar with this comprehensive literacy framework. We think it's a very good visual. When they're working on their schedules, we're able to work with grade-level teams, because in any day, there's a lot to get done in every academic area, and that includes literacy, there's a lot to get into literacy. So, it really helps them prioritize those things up there, are very important, all of them. And so, we're able to work with grade-level teams, which is very exciting, but we're also able to differentiate at a teacher level to celebrate the awesome growth. When teachers feel very confident in the area, we continue to work with them and celebrate those things. But then, when they have areas that they really want to focus and work on, that's where we love coming alongside them, and we're able to help them with really specific things in their literacy block.
My name is Tamara Dobbins, and I'm a literacy coach at Otter and Birch. And what I'm speaking to is that there is a science to teaching reading, and it's not a natural process. We weren't wired to learn how to read, and so, that idea of how to teach students how to come along with us and learn how to read is really something that we want to support students with and teachers with as well. And part of the comprehensive framework really highlights what we call the big five stages of reading. So, phonemic awareness, phonics, comprehension, vocabulary, and fluency. And those are really foundational in teaching students how to read, and kind of starting at that very basic level of phonemic awareness, which is that ability to manipulate and hear sounds. Reading into phonics, which is the relationship between letters and sounds. Fluency is reading with expression, a tone, and an appropriate rate of reading. And then comprehension, really gaining meaning from their reading, and really, that's the goal of reading, is we want students to gain meaning. And then vocabulary, of course, is just in everything that they're reading or listening to as well, really highlighting that idea of reading comprehension, listening comprehension, they're absorbing vocabulary, and really listening to those new words, and building their oral language. And to that end, teaching reading, it needs to be done direct, and very explicit and systematic. And so, that's something that we want to support our teachers with, is that process of helping them to teach that systematic instruction. So, on our next slide, just kind of speaking about that ongoing professional learning for teachers, and the importance of helping our teachers to build their capacity to help support student outcomes and student achievements. And again, highlighting that core five on that model. Cynthia will then speak to a little bit more detail about how we're doing that in different ways.
So, Cynthia Mueller, principal at Otter Lake Elementary. Mr. Healy, I want you to imagine a Jenga. You know the game Jenga? The game Jenga is in front of us right now, okay? And you take out a piece, one of the blocks on the bottom, right, and you put it at the top. And then you take another piece, and you put it at the top, right? And what eventually happens if I were to keep just taking from the bottom, what would happen? Oh, it crumbles down, right? So, this is what Tamara was alluding to, that systematic explicit instruction with reading. We know that it develops pretty much in stages, in a pretty consistent stage pattern. This is well researched, decades of research around the science of reading and how we learn to read. And any research that continues to come out just further supports the research. The big five really came out of the National Reading Panel back in 2000. But this graphic here, what it really looks at is what would be a typical developing, the typical developing pattern for a reader. So, starting at that phonemic awareness level, that's basically what you can do free of words. So, anytime you're working on rhyming with a child, that's a phonological awareness that will build into phonemic awareness. When you're having them segment sounds, cat, that's phonemic awareness. It's critical, that's actually the most essential skill to future reading development. They have to have phonemic awareness to decode words. So, then we build into phonics, which is the relationship between letters and sounds, and that's explicit phonics instruction. As they get good at decoding, we can really work at that fluency. They need to be reading at a particular rate, because once they are reading at a rate, their brain is freed from having to decode, and they can focus on thinking about the meaning of a text. All the while, though, we cannot wait for them to be decoding at a certain rate to comprehend text before we teach comprehension. So, the two bars on the other side, we're continuously working on, which is listening comprehension is, you know, what teachers do all the time when they're reading a book aloud to students, and just talking about the story, retelling the story. And then, of course, vocabulary development, because words contribute to the comprehension piece to it. So, this is kind of looking at the big five as reading stages. And when we talk about the support of the literacy coaches and the literacy framework is really helping our teachers understanding the science, but now the literacy coaches helping them. Now, how do I put that into practice with the students that are in front of me? So, one of the ways to look at this, Mr. Healy, thank you, is, for example, we know that there are things that our students, all of our students, need to know. And so, we put those into whole group lessons, because that's a most efficient model, right? That there's comprehension, vocabulary skills, that we need to make sure that they all have. But then, we also know that students, because they're individuals, they might learn at different rates, and we need to be prepared to differentiate for them. And so, we have students that we then use the assessments, as Mr. Schmidt had talked about, using the assessment data to really determine, what do we do next with this student? So, students can have both. They have both what they need with, in terms of whole grade-level standards, but also, what are the differentiated needs that they need to make sure that they catch up, so that Jenga board has the holes filled in, and it can stand sturdy and tall for them.
Thank you. So, when we go back to the research and we do self-check, how are we doing? We've had a chance to connect all the principals, literacy coaches, and along with literacy coaches, we have exceptional innovation coaches, peer reviewers. We have several coaching positions within the district that are really doing a good service to the teachers across the district. But specifically speaking to the literacy coaches here, we talked about the knowledge of a coach, and the ability not only to have that ability to come alongside and help cognitively coach somebody, to see what it is in their practice that they want to improve on, and then having the expertise to support them to ultimately be better results for students. That's working. The way that we're embedding those supports is working. And when we look at what's going to get us to that next curve, you know, to jump, really accelerate our results, and by the, then the foundation of trust, there is a lot of trust for coaches in our district in terms of the value of, you're here to help me, you're not here to judge me, you're not here to evaluate me, you're here to really come alongside and support me. So, that foundation of trust, and that embedded coaching of, and the expertise of helping somebody adjust their instruction, the area that we see is our opportunity for improvement would be the frequency piece, in terms of having those multiple touchpoints in order to really help somebody shift their practice. But we have a lot to really celebrate as we look back two years in terms of a district that is really on the front end, if you look at change, and what it takes to really move towards system change and support a new strategy coming into place. The research says it takes, you know, three to five years to really start seeing the benefits of that. We're seeing some leading indicators that the coaching has been successful, and it helps for us to be able to look and see some of the ways in which what we're doing is actually making a difference, and we're always looking at what it's going to take to continue to move towards the outcomes that we're after for students. So, with that, are there any questions for the team?
Solison.
What are some of those indicators that are showing the change in success of this program?
So, that was what I was referring to in terms of the foundation of trust, and having the, not only the structure of a CIT, but the way that the coaches are being used within that CIT model, to actually work with groups of students, and then the work with individual students. So, in terms of a coaching model impacting instruction, are you aligned with the research on that?
And does, how is that trickling down into classrooms?
Anne, I think you have some things for Ryan to share, or do you want to add on?
Some of the initial indicators that we've seen, you know, our reading scores were kind of steady, and we've seen a slight uptick on some of the assessments. One thing we're noticing with the common interim assessments, the alignment and coherence to the standards for teachers to, it's kind of in this discovery of, oh, it means this when we're teaching point-of-view, and when we're teaching inference. I think the conversations that are taking place along with literacy coaches, and work with the common interim assessment and the collaborative inquiry teams, is helping teachers really get an eye for the level of rigor within the standards, so they've started to see some shifting in practice. And that's a leading indicator that has been consistently that we've seen at the grade, at all the grade levels, and then in all the buildings. So, those are some other pieces that we look at. Also, I think as we're looking at even from last year to this year, we've had some gains within lots of pockets in different pieces. So, those are some of the things that we're really seeing, that is just some real clear pieces.
And I would just add that when we talk about interim assessments, instead of waiting until the end of the year for an MCA test, interim assessments are standards-based that are indicators along the way towards the expectations we have for student growth and student learning as they progress through. And so, it's been a really good help to us to have those feedback loops now quarterly that are connected to an assessment that we give that sometimes has felt very externally-driven, because the standards really do provide us with a roadmap, but it's a little bit, it's going to provide us a way for teachers to be able to use. it's going to provide us a way for teachers to be able to use that student outcome data to adjust instruction a little bit, a little bit more seamlessly than just the end of the year state assessment.
Stacy.
And I know we're talking elementary literacy, but having been in the middle school and with reading in the content area, is there an opportunity for middle school staff to tap into like a coaching model? Like if you're trying a reading strategy in your science classroom and you just want to run it by someone or have someone come in and observe the kids, is there an opportunity to tap into the literacy coaching model in terms of improving things for kids at middle school also?
I think that's an important part of how we look at the work moving forward. We have had, we had a secondary literacy review and work going on that was very involved with content teachers and leadership amongst the administration team. And I think we've had some reinforcement placed there in terms of how literacy is part of core instruction and it has to be part of core instruction beyond elementary. And that everybody, essentially, needs to be armed with reading strategies. Our secondary administrators are amazing with Avid and using work with strategies, which is connected to work with literacy. But I think your comment is really good on it. Lori was very involved and did some work with that secondary team and has gone in and worked alongside principals. So we've had a little bit of it, but I feel like you're offering something that will be even a bigger.
You know, in terms of the coaching model, the real value of having someone there and you're practicing it in the classroom and you're kind of getting that immediate feedback to like, yes, that works or that, and this is how you could better differentiate that reading strategy. Because, I mean, in middle school too, you know, like I had my science standards, but I was really vested in the reading strategies also. So you're kind of balancing your subject standards with reading in the content area. So how do we best mesh that and do that and help people do that effectively?
And we could also follow up with you. We do have a reading specialist at one of the secondary schools. And we can follow up with what's worked and what are some opportunities that we see coming from that? How would you look at that?
Thank you.
Ms. Ballot?
She asked my question, so I'm good.
Dr. Newmaster?
Well, I'm kind of a data person always. And I read the same statement twice, the impact statement. And it talks about 14 hours sustained showed positive student gains. And teachers who received 30 or more showed proportionally larger student gains. And I didn't know if that was a quote from something that was in this book.
It's from the research, yeah.
Okay. And I guess the part of me that looks at data says, does that represent something that's statistical or just kind of a general positive look? Because as we look at the importance of closing the gap and whether it's the achievement gap or the opportunity gap, we're looking at, people are more impatient for something that's data that shows improvement. And if we're hovering and some of our people are never improving, there's still something, you know, missing. And this gives our teachers lots of skills and it sounds great, but does it apply, how does it apply to our kids that are temperators and are still having this big reading achievement gap in different areas?
There's a couple of really good points that you're making and what you're saying. First of all, it's challenging to have that depth of touchpoints with each teacher. We're doing a really good job of working with teacher groups through CITs and having touchpoints. It's not something that really is happening the way that things are now with individual teachers getting that many touchpoints with that, you know, there's one between two buildings. There's a lot of really good that's coming from that. But in terms of really going into that depth of frequency of feedback loops to really support the teachers to run instructional change, that's just something that right now has kind of got our attention of how we think about that in order to accomplish that. I really appreciate your comment that when a reader, when someone is struggling with reading and they continue on through their education, it is something that we are thoughtful about as we look at our intervention support model, making sure that's also something that we're bringing into place so that there's an additional layer of support on top of the more instructional classroom.
And what you're talking about here is a number of very important variables in the picture. But I'm going to be, I guess, the proactive person that says, another variable that I always look at is, do you have a less elementary media program for that voluntary free reading, crashings, stuff that he's talking about? That's a variable that has shown improvement in the achievement also. And it actually has shown positive improvement. And I look at the high school kids that are struggling. And there's a lot of variables and you're covering many of them. And the teacher is a super important piece of it. But I hope we can look at other variables that are also proven. So I want everybody to achieve and love to read and just have that passion to find. And if we look at kids that need to be self-actualized and, you know, driving their own passions, they have to have the opportunities to explore and find them. You're giving them the tools, but they have to have time and place too and support. That's my other piece of it. There's so many variables.
Ms. Solson.
I have another question. For the literacy coaches, are there elements of the work that you do that adjusts for students with IEPs, students with 504 plans? I mean, how does that fit into the work that you're doing with teachers to support them?
I think, yes, because when we are in classrooms, we're with teachers, we're talking about all the students. And so often the teachers are, how can I support this student? How can I change my instructions so that I'm allowed to be able to work with this small group or to take this small group? How do I look at my assessments? Where we work often with the assessment data that they get, the ongoing data for daily as well as the interim and the bigger assessments. And what is this showing that my student has a strength? And what is it showing that their next step is? How can I group kids so that I can work with those next steps and accelerate that running for them? So that's really a big part of the work that we're doing to support it as a structure and to support it as what's their next steps.
Yes, you rather eloquently described the science of reading. I'll turn that around a bit here. Granted, third grade, my ideation here may be a bit premature, but are there specific content areas that rise with particular difficulty in mastering reading? And you're probably guessing and driving at science and to a lesser extent math. If not in elementary, although I would submit that late elementary is a factor, certainly middle school. And I mean, it goes all the way back down to basic phonics and, you know, Geosink line. Okay. And then with all the root stems and prefixes that are based in Latin and Greek, you know, reading is a real challenge. And yet they have to master it in a rather short cycle to carry on with the learning. I was wondering if you noted that.
Yeah, so I'll speak a little bit to Otter Lake. Right now, we're looking, really having taken a deep dive into phonics right now and looking at what are currently our students, looking at their data and going, what are, how are they performing related to phonics? We're also deeply unpacking the Minnesota State Standards, which interestingly enough, everything you were just talking about, prefixes, suffixes, roots, those kind of things, they're all in the Minnesota State Standards under the foundational skills for phonics, all the way up through fifth grade. So our teachers are unpacking those. And what we're finding is, yes, as students, you know, with the phonics, it's a typical stage around K-2, but as they get into those what we call multi-syllabic words, so they have more than one syllable, that's where their decoding skills start to break apart. Well, if I can't decode a word or even know that each syllable has a unit of meaning, a morpheme, which is a unit of meaning, and I'm not sure what that means, or maybe I do know what it means that can help me figure out this word. You know what I mean? So that's that science behind reading, but it's also the art of knowing the student and then how do you adjust? But these are very much part of our conversations right now. So yes, I would say science is definitely an area. And just like we're talking about that reading to learn, learning to read, it, learning to read never ends. Because as the text gets more complex, I still have to use some basic reading foundational skills to help me understand that text.
Foundational skills as well as knowing structures of text and how text works as informational text versus a story sort of structure. The good thing, I think, about our content areas in elementary school is that much of them are hands-on and there's a lot that they do through talk and through exploration to support that. And then the teacher's job to help them learn the vocabulary that they're using. And but as there is, it's more multisensory, they're able to pick up on some of that content as well.
Do we have an idea yet how we're going to address that or?
Address the complex vocabulary. Well, I mean, and if you go back to our comprehensive framework, all those different areas, I mean, it's through professional development that, you know, we've talked, sorry, we started through a lot of writing instruction where we're both writing in content areas, which would also support that, but also then working into word study and vocabulary. And so through more professional development, through our CIT work and through us working with each of those groups, that's where we hope to continue to support that. Shared learning.
As I say, I really like appreciate this like structure and focus on literacy. Like I don't know how you did it in 2005, 2009 when I was taking kids in third grade. But like it just seems like there's a lot less room for kids to fall behind in that structure rather than when I was there.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Ballot?
I just had a comment because I have a young, my youngest is now in sixth grade and I know that he went through some of this, which wasn't totally in this form yet, but was building up to it. And he went from first grade into second grade. I know Ruth Curl was one of the people that was working with him as an interventionist because, I don't know, I think he took the MAP test for the first time in first grade, got like the fifth percentile or something crazy like that. But he jumped huge in the second grade. And I think by third grade, he was up in the 90th percent time. So, I mean, I've seen it personally, worked really, really well. So I think it's, I think it's one of those. And I'd like to see it more at the secondary level.
Other questions, comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You can definitely see in the side of this group the passion for what you guys are doing. So thank you very much. See, I knew initially.
And in any other way, I'm going to go there.
Thank you all very much. With that, we will move to our second discussion item, policy discussion around policy 504 and 506. Ms. Paul, is that you still?
Yes, thank you very much. Got a couple of colleagues joining me. And just to give you the big idea, we're all pretty familiar with how the process usually works with reviewing policies where we look at the Minnesota School Board Association recommended changes that they have for policies. We go through and recommend some language, we bring that to the policy committee, we have a discussion there, it's sent to the full board for review. We have a first reading at the school board and then time, you know, till the next school board meeting before it has a second approval. We're going to vary from that process tonight a little bit because we've got two policies that have generated a lot of discussion in terms of how we look at it from an administrative point of view. And before we bring these two policies back to the policy committee and really formalize the recommendations that we have for these two policies, we just want to benefit from your thinking and just process with you what's on your mind from a policy perspective as school board members as we look at our student dress policy and as we look at the student discipline policy. And really that, we just want to have a dialogue with the full board. The last time that the dress policy, the dress code policy went through the board was when Dr. Kazminacek and I were first here in 2014 and we had heard stories of a very long process about all the conversations that had taken place. That's really healthy. And so it's time now, time has passed, and it's time for us to have some time invested into having a conversation about things that I think really make, these policies make a big difference in terms of the student experience, so.
So I'll start.
Yep.
You know, for me, and I totally respectfully understand that there's a lot of other things that go into making the decisions. And for me, it's more around the hat issue. And I'm not talking just basically regular ball caps. I'm talking, you know, stocking caps, beanies, those sort of things also. I understand being respectful of all of that stuff that goes into the dress of, I mean, I listen, I have two teenagers, right? So I see it every day. I'm just kind of trying to figure out why we don't allow kids to wear hats or even, I asked my son this morning if he's allowed to wear his stocking cap at school that has a bear emblem on it. And he said, no, as soon as I get into school, I have to take it off. And I said, what do you do when your ears are cold, right? What do you do when your head's cold? He said, I put my hood on and I wear my, because he wears a hoodie. You know, he puts that over his thing. And the other day when we walked into his classroom after our breakfast, he had his hood on. And I thought, oh, you know, I mean, rather, much rather him wear a stocking cap. And not to single out my son, but I'm sure there's other boys, you know, and girls that plays into effect. So for me, I would like the hat thing to be discussed and maybe eliminated. Again, I respect if someone's wearing a hat that's inappropriate, they shouldn't be wearing that. That's, I'm not having that, you know, saying that that's acceptable. But around all hats, I mean, my son's got a hat with a John Deere tractor on that he loves, right? So, Ms. Newmaster?
Comment about the hats? Because I spent over 30 years at North Campus and hats were discussed many, many times along with hoodies. And I buy a lot of clothes that had hoodies. It's hard to buy tops that don't have them. So if we had a rule that said, no clothing with hoods, you'd eliminate half of my wardrobe probably. And it's not that I put it over my head to hide my face. And the only logic I ever heard at North, and this is at North, when the kids would say, why can't we wear hats? Why can't we wear hoods? It's for identifying people on the cameras in the hall. That's the only reason.
It's not the only reason.
Well, some of them would be inappropriate. I mean, that's different. And if we talk about, do you wear a hat in your home? Is it good manners? I mean, that's cultural and there's all kinds of things. And then other people wear hats as part of religion or because of a health issue. You know, there's lots of reasons. But we always have the no hat policy, take it off when you get to school. And the only logic that made sense to kids was, we've got cameras in the halls now and we can't ID you if you have a hat. Is that true?
I mean, it makes it easier, but I mean, it isn't a concern. We could identify them based on the hat that they're wearing.
Can I, can I, go ahead, go ahead.
No, go ahead and then I'll go.
Is there any safety concerns around with kids wearing hats in schools? Or I'm going to just say stocking caps in schools?
No, but what I will say is that came about for most districts when we were really concerned around when Columbine happened and all of that stuff. So at the time, it made the most sense. Now, there are still people who would say that it's a concern, but it's not something that people would say that we would implement to make sure our schools are more safe. So usually kids who wear hats, you know what hat they're wearing and you can identify them that way. And we have, we have strong relationships with kids. So we have many people who could identify kids on cameras. It may not be that I know who they are, but we have a team. So that wouldn't be a concern of mine as a principal.
Are there any concerns with kids wearing hats over at South? Is it the same as we're talking about at North?
So what I will say, oh, there, students.
We just kind of talked about this in one of my classes the other day.
We just kinda talked about this in one of my classes the other day, cause someone asked the teacher, you know, why do you guys prefer that we don't wear hats? Cause a lot of the teachers at South, they're really like accepting and open to like, you know, letting us make our own decisions because we are close to being adults and once you're an adult, you do make your own decisions. They said, one of the things was, a lot of the kids at South can look very adultish. You know, they have beards, they have, they look like grownups. And so if they saw someone walking around with a hat on that was kinda covering their face and they looked old, they could go, they like, it's kind of hard to tell if they really do look like an adult or if they're just a student, but if they can fully see their face and fully see who like they are, they go, I don't recognize that person. It's easier to identify whether they look like they belong there or if they don't, well, whether that is actually the thought or if that was just that teacher, I don't know. But I thought that was really interesting and a good point.
Yeah, and like, I like this, like the addition of obscures the student's identity, but like I don't think a stocking cap obscures the student's identity. It's not like, I understand the baseball hat because it's covering your face, like the stocking cap is not.
It just keeps your hair cut.
Yeah, it just gets your hair in the morning in school sometimes.
I think ultimately at all of our schools, there's, there's debates. It's not, something that's not talked about. My opinion on whether it, you know, obscures that ability to see them is not everyone's opinion. So it is something for sure that people are talking about, kids have different opinions. Um, staff members feel passionately-
That was something that explained it to us.
Yep, you're right, they do explain that, yep.
Yeah, it was such a big issue and people loved their hats so much. But I was putting on them in them to get in the hall.
Ms. Fahy?
My thoughts are from having been a teacher for 39 years is that we often make rules just for the basis of making rules. And we say community standards and we don't know, okay, whose community standards we're talking about. If we look at our policy committee, what's the representation on our policy committee? Um, who's actually making the policies? And I think of a number of years ago when they were trying to, there was some dissatisfaction with what a few staff members were wearing and there was gonna be this staff dress policy that was like from the 1950s, talking about garbadeed pants and et cetera. And I actually looked at the staff dress policy today and it's very brief. It says common sense. And in terms of trusting our administrators to decide in the building with, you know, are the kids allowed to put their hoodie up? Are they allowed to wear a hat? I think we've reached the time where we do need to use common sense and let building administrators talk about that with their staff in terms of what's allowable that building because something may be different at middle school, with high school, with elementary school and give, you know, a general guideline instead of saying specific things in policies that you will not have headgear such as a hat or a head covering or a hood, et cetera. I think it's time we, that we talk about that and not be so prescriptive and trust our administrators and our students. There's always the case where, I know, and Allison, you mentioned relationships. I know when we talk about clothes that are revealing, it's like if you point your finger at a kid and say, go to your locker and put something on, where if you take them aside and say, hey, you know, honey, what message are you sending here? You know, you can have a conversation with kids about that. And I think it's time we, we look at that and not be so prescriptive and kind of punitive in what we do.
Mr. Chapman? Uh, hold on a second, I'll get around, I'll be. Mr. Chapman?
Well, I agree with what Board Member Fahy said, but I have no strong feelings on this whole thing at all as far as wearing cap, hats and so forth. If it's not a safety issue in my mind and it's not disruptive to the classroom, um, yeah, I think it should be left really at the, at the administrative level. Um, the one concern I do have when we talk about stocking caps would be the kind that you've got, you know, the eye holes and so forth. That clearly is, would be a, you know-
That would obviously obscure your-
Yeah, yeah, we have to deal with how, or figure out how we're gonna deal with that from a policy or just of a case by case standpoint. But otherwise, I, I don't have a strong feeling as far as keeping this thing the way we've got it now. I think we should be more flexible.
It's a lot of energy expended on hats.
Yeah, exactly.
Ms. Wilson?
Uh, well, and I wanted to go off what Ms. Fahy said about trusting our administration in buildings because the word that really bothers me in this whole policy is the word revealing. I think it, it sets up a atmosphere of shame and for the most part, it's directed at girls. Um, you don't often hear about boys being pulled aside for something that's revealing. And I feel like we need to trust our young women and we need to hold our, our young men to a standard and say, you know what? What they're wearing is their business. And I don't think that we need to be setting up our young women to be in a situation where they feel like they've done something wrong. Um, so the hat policy, I concur. If your head is cold, you should wear a hat, you know, as long as it's not covering your face. But it's the word revealing that I really have a problem with.
I'll get you, Mr. Wilson, let me. No, I'm sorry, go ahead. I apologize, you haven't asked a question yet. Go ahead.
No, I haven't. I am so heartened to hear amongst us that caps and hats are only viewed as articles of clothing. Having spent 20 years in a district where the areas where the students are grown from are featured regularly on the night news for the high crime rates, I will tell you there are safety factors involved with wearing caps and hats and so forth in school. Now, if you truly feel that doesn't apply, I'm all, all with you. But I've been a part of many searches, it reveals pills, tabs, everything else inside the bands of caps, inside the folds of stocking hats, and there's a lot of dangerous things. It can be light blade, bladed weapons in there. That, you know, that's the reason they can't wear them around the buildings where I was. Now, if that doesn't apply here, great.
I can, I can secrete that lots of other places also.
Oh, there's some tough places you can have things.
Well, that's why I think initially I asked, right? Is there a safety concern around not allowing hats in the schools?
Maybe they don't too.
And, and I respectfully understand what you're saying, right? Uh, cause I went to school in some of those places, right? But the truth, that's why I asked that question.
Well, and I started my career in those places and it has changed. You know, hats used to identify gang membership. That's not the way things are now and the way gangs identify themselves and, um, so that's where there was a reason we had all this and those reasons you're talking about. Do those reasons still exist now? Um, I don't know if they do or not. We would have to have a greater conversation. You know, that's why we're getting your input as well. I'm, I'm speaking as Allison, one principal. I don't speak for all my colleagues, they may have different opinions than I have. But our neighboring districts have also had this conversation and have landed in different spots. So I think it's great that we're talking that. But what you bring up is valid from back when a lot of these rules were constructed for many schools.
Matt?
Um, I agree with you on like the whole revealing piece and distracting and disruptive. I feel like what a student wears to school, if it's within reason, should not be considered distracting to other students. Most students are there to learn, not to look at other students in a certain way because their clothing distracts them. I mean, more than once, it happened to me in ninth grade when I was, after gym class, I had a sweater with me, but I was hot because I had just been running around and I was wearing a tank top. The tank top was not revealing in any way, but it would do not, it was a spaghetti strap tank top and then it was like flowy. And I was called aside by a teacher saying I wasn't allowed to wear that tank top to school again and if I did, um, I would be kicked out of class because it was too distracting to the other students. And I found that really upsetting to me because I was hot and I wasn't gonna put on a sweater because then I'd be too hot. And I was just sitting in the back of the classroom trying to study and do my work and I was told that I couldn't wear it, something that I needed to change. And so therefore, making students change because of something they're doing is then taking them out of the environment they should be in learning. They're taking away class time and learning time from that student to make them go change into something else when they should just be sitting in class doing what they're supposed to be doing regardless of what they're wearing. I mean, it's within reason they can't, you know, wear something super, just undergarments like that, but like, within reason, students should not be forced to leave class and taken out of their environment to change their clothing.
Uh, and same with like hats. I don't really think like gang activity is going to be a problem. Why bear, like the only thing is like maybe old hockey guys will wear their hats or whatever, like that's the only gang you're gonna have. But, um, I just think that like it's some identity of students is in their hat. Like they'll wear hats at home constantly, whether it's because of like a sport that they like or like someplace that they went on vacation. They wear it all the time except at school. And like that's then taking away their identity.
So I'll tell you, for me, um, I had this conversation over the weekend with like both my kids that are, one's at North and as you know, one's at South and the, the, my daughter at South said I should be allowed to wear spaghetti straps. So I'll, I'll say that I echo that sentiment and the hat was my son. So, um, I'm sorry, Ms. Paul.
No, I'm sorry, I thought you were wrapping it up.
No, it's all good. I can talk, I can keep on going.
Yeah, um, I had, I had brought this up initially because, um, we had received those letters from the middle school kids and they had brought up the dress code policy and that initially made me go through and look at it with a, with a different eye and knowing how things were when I was in high school where shorts had to be, where you, down to where your fingers were, depending how long your arms were. That was either a problem or not a problem, but, um, it always seemed like everything applied to females. You were the distraction. So you had to do something about being the distraction, not fixing the problem which is my, my shorts or wearing spaghetti straps is not the problem. Some, some girls develop when they're in the seventh grade, some girls develop later on and then we, we put these arbitrary rules out there as well. You know, if you're endowed, you can't wear spaghetti straps because that's distracting. Distracting to whom? You're not distracting to other girls. Supposedly you are distracting to the boys. Well, whose issue is that really? And what are we telling our boys as they're growing up? That all these things need to change so you aren't distracted by all these things? Well, maybe the, the theory should turn to, well, maybe that's something you need to get used to and you need to learn how to develop and look another way or not be distracted. So that was my reaction to it. The hats, I, my kids wear, well, my oldest would wear a hat 24/7 sleeping, what if he could? So I, I don't have a problem with, with the hats. I, I actually know most of his friends buy the hats they wear when they're running around the neighborhood. So the whole idea that you couldn't identify them because they're wearing hats, I see where that, you know, if you're used to seeing kids around everywhere, but I don't have a problem with that. But I think we're, we're really skirting the line of being, going into sexism if we don't change some of our attitudes about what the females can and cannot wear. It should make a difference. If I'm wearing something nude, I get it. They shouldn't have profanity on there. That would be distracting. That I get as distracting. Or, you know, some, along those lines, that is distracting. The other stuff shouldn't be distracting. And I've heard of girls that are being pulled out of classes for like spaghetti straps on a maxi dress. Well, you are completely covered from here down to your ankles, but you're wearing spaghetti straps, so you have to go home and change and different things like that. You obviously shouldn't have parts of your body that shouldn't be hanging out, hanging out. But I think there's, though I think there's a line that we're crossing here when we, when we allow the teachers to make those decisions as opposed to being, yeah, I mean, because everyone has a different perspective on it. One teacher may be offended by it and another teacher not. So we either have to say, all of those things can't happen, or we say, we're good with this. This is where I land on.
Ms. Fahy?
Okay, I'm gonna throw it out. You know, I was always the worst one for enforcing the dress policy because I was more concerned with if the kids were engaged or they were working and often wouldn't notice. But in defense of, I taught seventh grade science for my last 17 years, in defense of boys who are 12 and 13. If it is, all of a sudden you notice a boy kinda not knowing where to look and red in the face and afraid to say anything and then you go over and someone is wearing something that is extremely revealing. Or they're bending over doing a lab and this poor young man doesn't know where to look. Then I, I saw that as my responsibility to speak privately with a young lady in terms of, you know, honey, when you bend over, everything's visible. Um, that, you know, in defense of those 12 and 13 year old boys who are going through puberty, sometimes you've gotta speak to a female, but privately. You know, spaghetti straps don't bother me, but I think we've gotta be realistic about this too, that sometimes, um, shorts, if your butt is visible, if you're, you know, that, that, that is going to, in an educational environment, it's gonna make it difficult for some of our young men and some of our male teachers. So I think we need to be cognizant of that, um, you know, in terms of spelling, saying, you know, some girls can wear spaghetti straps, other girls can really rock those spaghetti straps. And it, it does make it difficult for some of the male students that are just going through puberty. So I think we need, that needs to be out there also. And you just need to be aware of that, that at some stage, or when we were, when the young men were all wearing their pants down around their ankles. Um, you know, and sometimes you have to say, excuse me, we can see your boxer, you know, just so you know, we can see your boxer shorts. But, you know, I just wanna throw that out there because I, in middle school that I was approached by male colleagues, like, would you mind speaking to so-and-so because it, it is a little bit difficult to help them with their math, et cetera. So I'm just gonna throw that out there as long as we're having an honest conversation.
Hold on a second, hold on. I, I, I wanna first ask the question, so with the policies, with both of them, I know that they were, they actually came for the first reading. We pulled them off the agenda last month, we were gonna bring them back the next month?
So one of them, one of them came forward. Uh, that was the dress, dress policy. And a couple of you reached out and they asked if there could be a broader discussion about it and that's what we're having. And then, and also, we also got the letters from students talking about dress code. So there was some, some feeling that we should, we should revisit this. So that's why we're, that's why we're doing this here now. And then the discipline policy was added at the request of, of Ellen, so there could be some additional conversation there. And that's not, that's not going before the board for approval any, um, soon, but there was, um, there are some, there's some conversation that we should have around that as well. So I think one of the takeaways from the policy that we're working on right now is that some of these suggested changes need to be revisited and then gone, and we need to go back through the policy committee with that, with the next committee.
So I, and I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, I'm, I wanna make sure that everybody's voice is heard, but I think for that policy, for 504, right? I think that needs to go back to the policy committee.
Yeah, and I feel like we have real clear direction and I think we'll, um, and this was an unusual step, but it was a step that was requested and so, um, I think this was good discussion and now we'll back and we'll, we'll, with our committee revisit this one.
So before we put that to bed then, I wanna make sure that there's any additional comments or questions regarding 504, we can get those out on the record now. Dr. Newmaster?
I just wanna say one. I did like the comments here that said, you know, if we can keep it general, eliminate the revealing and trust our administrators and our teachers. And if, and I'm thinking back to every year when you teach the handbook, that's when you have that discussion with your homeroom, with your kids and you say, we're trusting you. And these are the things, I mean, that's kind of, I, I remember way back when, one of our fax teachers, Helen Kirby Larson, took a, a fashion design thing and they went to what fit and what didn't fit and had like circles and put it outside her room. Great look, questionable. And it came from a class discussion and they went through VOG or something. So, but I think that can make it a lot more fallible.
Mr. Chapman?
I agree that the, um, these policies I think are so dated and archaic as far as, I think they are sexist, quite frankly. We dealt with the same issue over at 916. And in fact, that might be a policy that we might wanna look at because it wasn't that long ago where this very topic came up as to singling out females and we changed the language-
language over there to be much more flexible and less of a spotlight on women or on girls. So I think there's gotta be a balance, you know, a healthy balance because I hear what you're saying Ellen, and yes, I probably was one of those because in my younger days it kind of flushed easily, and I still do. But, you know, it's that, but at the same time, there's gotta be reason given and more flexibility than what we're seeing now in this policy.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, shifting gears just a bit, I know it's a wordy policy already, but I was wondering if we wanted to include the word provocative and my thought here?
No, no, I went those judgment terms.
It's almost worse.
You know, I think, sorry.
What I'm saying, kid shows up on a Jewish holiday, let's say, what Holocaust? There's a growing sentiment in this country that that never occurred.
That what never?
The Holocaust never occurred.
Okay, I think, I, I, I know that, please excuse me, Mr. Wilson, and I wanna finish, I want you to finish your comment, but I know that Mr. Chapman and Ms. Ellison are both on that policy committee too, right? And I think that as that piece kind of comes forward again, we can really have that conversation around verbiage and, and what that entails. And I'm not, I still wanna hear what you have to say, I'm just.
On driving it and with my military administrative position, it's provocative. What is it? Well, it's something that would, in all likelihood, produce an angered or possibly violent response. So I was wondering if we wanted to try to put some language in that would curb wearing such apparel.
Well, disrupting the education process.
Yeah, and that's discussed in number fours specifically.
About sayings on shirts and stuff.
That's the full word, they're saying vulgar, profane, but yeah. There, there is a gap there where, you know, the wording could be neither vulgar nor profane, but it would be provocative.
Right, I think D, if you look at part D, it lists a whole lot of things.
I'll objection to my items, yeah.
While you're reviewing that, Ms. Ellison?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that, that as we're moving forward this policy and you know, and Mr. Chapman and I will, we'll see this again, that we're just making sure we're not putting undue burden on young women and not putting any sort of blame on them for how they happen to look and present themselves. You know, I just want that to be forefront in our minds.
And I think that honestly, throughout everybody, we all agree with, with that statement and, and agree with moving that forward and as you two are looking at it and those the rest of the policy committees continuing to look at that, I would, would encourage you to make sure that, that you guys look for the verbiage that meets that standard.
And we'll pull the nine sixteen example and there's some other examples that we'll pull and so it might not be right away in a, in a month, it might take us a little while, and pull some, some better samples together.
So we won't see this until that's redone and we'll kind of move it through?
Yep.
Ladies? Either one?
I guess the only like issue I find with like the word provocative is like with today in our culture right now, in this age, when I hear the word provocative, I don't think of language, I think of a person's body. And so I find that it goes hand in hand with revealing where it's, that might not be the true definition of it, but when people see that now, that's what they think. They don't think of maybe what it actually is. So I can feel like, I feel like it could create some bad connotations when they see that, whether that's what it's actually meant to be or not, I think we have to really focus on how it's gonna be interpreted because that's what the rules go based off, is how people think and how people see that rule. So I feel like if we're interpreting the word wrong, it can lead to more problems than solutions.
Yeah, this policy compared to four or five years ago, I've already seen like a giant improvement, like less people are like, almost non-ICD in these last two years have gotten called out for something that they're wearing compared to when I was in like sixth and seventh grade. And like I would just, a lot of students would be happy to know like that you're changing it and that you're on their side because I know a lot of kids used to hate like the administration because they're like, oh, they called me out on it and so they don't do that anymore.
So you're gonna get the policies to the policy committee? You guys are representative there, we'll move that thing through. Any other comments regarding five oh four?
Yeah, just, I'll just say the last phrase in paragraph four satisfies my concerns.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank you two for speaking up. This is a difficult thing to talk about and I appreciate your bravery in speaking about these things.
So with that, I think we move on to five oh six. Student discipline. I know there were probably some concerns there.
So this, this one isn't in the, in the hopper yet. It was approved back in October, so we would not be bringing this before the board most likely again, so I reviewed it over the summer and then the fall, preparing for the next school year. But I know Ellen wanted to make sure that we perhaps take a different approach to viewing this one as well as we, as we do this work, so I don't know. I don't wanna speak for you Ellen, but.
Well, my, originally when it came to us and I said I would, you know, approve it, but the next time it was looked at, or sometime before the student handbook, et cetera, that we do review our discipline policy because now we're talking about, you know, positive behavior interventions and supports and restorative practices and our policy, my reading of it appears very punitive and I assume that we're trying to move away from that. Just in a, you know, statement and of it, you know, the school board is to maintain order, is to maintain order. And when I looked, when we rewrote the one at Equity Alliance and stuff, we were taking a different approach. And I'm just gonna read a little bit of the, you know, purpose of this policy is to help all members of the school, school community work collaboratively to create a safe, supportive and equitable school climate through the use of positive discipline practices. And I think that's, to me, I think that's a better way to start and look at this. And I know I've sent the, the one that we did at Equity Alliance and Roseville's policy we looked at also. So I would like us to look at those, I would like the policy committee to have a discussion and in terms of incorporating what we are doing in the classroom in terms of those positive interventions instead of the punitive. And when you look at, like I think I was looking at section seven also, the disciplinary action options. If we're using conflict residue, resolution, mediation, positive intervention strategies, actually put that in there and, and look at those act, the options that we have in there now. So that, that was my request, that we could look at that.
So given that we were looking at one policy, thought it was a good time to at least mention, because I know when we approved that discipline policy Ellen, maybe the comments that I'll, I'll vote in support, but I hope we can look at this with a different lens for the next time around and so we wanted to get that on record again and as we work towards making changes to this over the next few months, that that would be part of what we're doing. Be honoring this, this request and I see some head nodding that that would be a good approach to maybe tackle this one, take a little more time with it, maybe incorporate some of these changes that are, we've thought about here.
What?
This is something that Willow has been kind of at the forefront of, of doing. I was wondering if maybe Chris, since she's sitting over there, says something about it, maybe give us some perspective on it.
Specifically about, sorry.
About the discipline policy and the kind of changes that, what did you call it Ellen?
The positive, PBIS, Positive Behavioral Interventions and Supports.
If you could. I know you're.
I didn't mean you had to give a dissertation, but I was thinking, so your, your school's sort of at the forefront of, of doing this, if we're gonna adopt this as a policy.
PBIS specifically.
Could you do me a favor though, before you do that, can you put your name on the record? Thank you.
Christopher, Principal of Willow Lane Elementary School.
Thank you.
We, we started doing PBIS right when I got here because it's the only framework that I know as an administrator, so it consists of a lot of components, but a matrix basically outlining the expectations in all of the areas of the building. We have posters outlining the expectations, staff go through the expectations and what our, our rules are in each of the areas. And we use an acronym PAWS to identify what they are in each of the areas. We identify what does it mean to have a positive attitude or to be respectful or responsible in the atrium, in the bathroom, in the cafeteria. We hand out PAWS tickets when we see them doing those things correctly, following the expectations. We've gotten better at handing out those PAWS tickets to kids that are on track a lot of the time, you know, you can fall into handing them out to kids that are struggling a lot and then they use those tickets, they put them into a drawing. We have a goal of 10,000 a year, so 10,000 times that we say that's the right thing to do. We feel that that changes our culture by, by pointing out the good stuff. At the end of every week, we do a drawing and we announce it on the, the morning announcements and they get their picture taken and they get to pick from a list of free rewards. So maybe five minutes extra recess for your class or shooting hoops with a teacher or having lunch with me or another teacher, so we just relational rewards. And then we use that data on a regular basis to look at, the data for the discipline data, we use it to target our students that have needs and we look at it on a regular basis for MTSS to provide supports to kids that we see are struggling. Thank you.
So I, I just have a question. So I know like this, like discipline for students is like an interest of mine and I've researched like some, like studies and stuff and I know I don't have all the research, so I don't have all the knowledge, but, so I found that like really working to find out the root of the problem and working with students to discuss like maybe why was this not the best choice, all that kind of stuff. And working to improve the behavior, not strictly going straight to, you know, giving out detentions, things like that, really helps to like, help the students understand why that behavior was wrong, especially at a young age. Is that something we implement readily in our schools or are we focused on disciplinary?
Chris can probably speak on this too in terms of the restorative practices.
Right, so we have been putting staff members through restorative, it's restorative dialogue that we use really at Willow, so this year, and it's hard too because not everybody believes that, you know, you need a consequence, we believe that if we reteach the kids and really work through the process, which we think we've been, we've been doing a pretty good job at processing and explaining why it's wrong, but then we would in addition slap on a consequence. And what we were learning was that that's not necessary. If their kid is willing to process and work through it with you, then they get to be done and, and they have to be willing to process with the other person if they're there. And we've actually done restorative dialogue with student and teacher as well.
My sister went to Sunrise when you started, or not Sunrise, Willow, when you started doing that. I remember her coming home, like if she got PAWS awards and she'd be so excited. And I think Sunrise just implemented something like the Spark Award, I'm not quite sure. Like they hand them out to kids and like the kids do get excited and they want to do better and like do extra things just so that they can get those awards, which I think is better than disciplining a kid for doing something wrong.
Ms. Ellison?
I am totally on board with all of this, I love it. Thank you Chris for sharing that, this is really great. So my question then is, is this an annual review policy?
Yes.
Okay? And what, it's also like thirty pages long. So what would it take then? What was that?
We have some work to do to provide a draft.
Right, so that's my question.
Get you a draft of, a policy that incorporates elements of this discussion.
Yeah, because that seems like an overhaul of a lot of this, which I think.
It'll take us some time to.
We're ready for it though.
Yeah, I think so.
And it works. And so let's, you know, listen to what's working and look at these other policies and.
Something that's more culturally responsive.
Yeah. And I think we, you know, we always don't have, I know we use the MSBA model policies, but we need to make it our own too and, and fit what we're doing and with our new strategic plan and the climate that we wanna have in the district. You know, it's helpful, the MSBA with all the legal references and things like that, but we really need to think, you know, what's our purpose here? Is it to punish or is it to support?
I have a second grader who put a pencil in the lock of his classroom and then it broke off in the lock and so they were all locked out of their classroom all afternoon. And the, the way that they could have handled it could have been so, and this is my, my child with special needs, could have been so difficult, but the way that they handled it to make him not feel like he's a bad kid, meant that he didn't come home and hide in the corner because he accidentally locked the door and he had to call a locksmith. So I, I feel like that is the way to go, to make kids feel their value and not just feel like they have a cloud because they did something dumb.
So, Dr. Newmaster?
I'm just gonna reaffirm all the positive things. And again, as an old person, do the historical perspective. And we used to hand out bear coupons and we'd have a day where if people were on time, they got a coupon, or if they were ready, or if they did something nice, I mean, and then there were drawings and things like that. And I think everything kind of goes through a cycle and, you know, kind of went beyond that, but there are other ways of, of doing that or reworking it. But we also need to have, and I don't know if the discipline policy is the place for it, but once in a while, the school board has to do something that is very specific and legal. And I think some of those are in there for expulsions and suspensions and what do they result from? And we've got all kinds of positive things that will hopefully avoid that forever and absolutely make sure that we're not targeting a specific group. But there, there needs to be some clear things at some point in your student behavior or discipline policy. So I love the fact that we've got all the positives, but I know that we have to have a definition of dismissal or expulsion or suspension.
Yeah, well that follows state statute, so it would be nice to take that one and do it as a separate or a subset policy for, you know, with those that, you know, because we do have to have that, the expulsion, the suspensions and all the legal terms in there, but it would be nice to even do that as a, a kind of policy five oh six B. Because reading it is depressing. It really is, it's depressing. And I'd rather start with the, with the general classroom stuff and then have five oh six B with the, when the school board has to make those hard decisions whether something happens.
So it's, it sounds to me like we've got a lot of work to do. I'm sorry, Chris, do you have something?
I was just gonna add that those things haven't gone away. Sometimes they're able to process or willing to process or the severity of the action just requires that there's consequence. And I think of that more in legal terms, to make sure that we are showing that we are doing something to keep kids safe at school.
I think a lot of what Chris described is also happening at middle school and high school, so it'd be exciting to share that because it may not necessarily be yet aligned with how our board policy reads, but that is best practice and what's, you know, for kids. So every level, we have really exciting things to share that we're trying to help kids learn from their behavior in a way that's not just consequence because consequences should help change a behavior and if they don't, then they're not working. Get it a different way, so that'd be great.
So it sounds like there's a lot of work and it sounds to me like you'll be, somebody will be writing a lot lately and we'll, we'll get a, hopefully a policy to the policy committee by middle to late summer. Is that kind of the thinking around the plan?
Yeah.
Kind of start to work it through?
Very realistic, yep.
Perfect.
This wouldn't come around for two years?
No, it'd come back next year.
It would come out next, it's an annual, so we just did it, you'll have time again.
We do all policies?
No.
That's what I was, that's what.
Some.
Certain ones, oh, okay, got it.
We'll make sure to time it with any handbook and expectations process that we have at the beginning of the year, so.
And I think with the, with the new policy coming, I think with this one especially, I think it would be important that after the policy committee gets a hold of it, that we bring it back to a work study before it comes to the board for the first time, so that we have a chance to, especially thirty pages, right? And I'm assuming that it's probably gonna be a little bit more, so bring it back to the board and let us chew it over through a work study and have a conversation around it, right? And, which would be very, very good, so.
But it is nice if that positive piece gets in it, gets on the website because that's where people look for your discipline policy. that's where people look for your discipline policy.
Anything else regarding 506?
So we're not bringing back corporal punishment?
Not yet.
Not unless you're wearing the watch chain. Don't, don't.
So, with that, with nothing left on 506, 'cause I'm gonna end that one, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
I'll second that, and we are adjourned.